To the March 7th meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board, it is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the chair, and we will start the meeting with a roll call to account for all of our members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hafer.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Heinel. Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo.
Aye.
Ms. Panero.
Aye.
Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you. Please join me now.
That's Nancy.
Yes.
I think, I think you forgot Mr. Hinton.
Oh, Mr. Hinton, I'm sorry. Shafik, I'd never forget you.
I'm here.
You, you, you can't be forgotten, Shafik. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Ms. Bensley, are there any changes to the tentative agendas published?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. In the February 29th email, you received draft minutes from the February 15th meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to meet, to read the draft minutes? Are there any changes or corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated.
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is the board's final recommendation and vote regarding the fiscal year 2025 capital budget and capital program for fifth fiscal year 2026 through 2030. I will now hand things over to my esteemed colleague, Vice Chair Scott Halepka, who's been chairing the CIP Committee. Mr. Halepka.
Thank you. I'm just trying to find my, my notes here. So, the Planning Board Capital Improvement Program process for fiscal year 2025 to fiscal year 2030 began on October 19th, 2023, with the citizens' input meeting held before the planning board. The board heard from citizens verbally and in writing who expressed their concerns relating to capital improvements for their communities. County Executive John Ashewski made a presentation to the Planning Board on January 18th, 2024. In his remarks, the county executive noted that the budget process is more transparent and open with the continuation of the town hall meetings in every council district and the open budget platform. Agencies have worked with the Chief Sustainability Officer to include resiliency and efficiency in their capital project requests. An agency presentation was required to address equity in their projects. The Planning Board Committee on the Capital Budget and Program had a series of meetings in January and February of 2024, during which representatives from the Baltimore County agencies presented their capital budget request. The Department of Planning presented the staff's CIP recommendations on February 15th. After much discussion, the CIP Committee accepted the staff's recommendations for the FY 2025 Capital Budget and Five-Year Program and suggested recommendations to be included in the board's transmittal letter to the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance. The trans, little, the transmittal letter was sent to the board on March 1st. Tonight, we have the opportunity to further discuss the Capital Budget and Five-Year Program and the presented transmittal letter. The letter includes the following additional project requests. First, additional funding for Department 210, general government buildings, property management to expedite repairs to the Bicota Senior Center. And secondly, additional funding in Department 213, schools for an expansion of the indoor facilities at Hereford High School by adding additional gym space. Does anyone have any additional comments or concerns with the transmittal letter?
Yes, Scott, I was under the understanding that we had solved for the sewer situation in the Catonsville area that I had brought up and I was assured that there was a solution. I've come to find out that that solution is not really a solution, but a bandage. And I would like to add that we, we would repair the last eight-foot line, which is 300 feet on, and I'll get the exact address here in one second. Sorry about that. I should have had that up. Trying to use the same device to do both of these at the same time. It is on Overbrook Road.
Do you have an exact address, Mr. Warren?
Yeah, it's the last 325 feet, so I think it starts at just north of 41 Overbrook to the city line.
And so, are, are you asking that we consider, and as before, that we recommend adding funds to address the, those last 325 feet?
Yes.
Mr. Warren, can you clearly state what you want your additional motion to be?
I would, I would like to modify the sewer funding, which I don't know what number that is, to include funds to complete the 15-foot main from 41 Overbrook to the city line, which is roughly 325 feet.
Okay, Mr. Lafferty, so do we vote on that first? Or vote on?
We would need a second to, to his motion, and then if it's approved, it would be added into the letter. If approved, it would be added into the letter. And then the vote would be to, the transmittal letter otherwise is sufficient to address its concerns of the board.
So, so what we'd do is we'd do, a call for a second and then do a roll call?
Yes. And then I think we also need a time for a discussion.
Correct. Second.
Ms. Wolfson, second. Any other discussion on Todd's motion?
If I may just ask you another question, has, are you indicating that the work has begun and this is the last section of the work to be completed?
Uh, in 2020, they, they, they added a 15-foot or 15-inch line and stopped about 325 feet short of the connection to the Baltimore 15 line. So, there's an eight, eight-inch line there. So, several members of that street have gotten hundreds of gallons of raw sewage dumped into their house every time there's a storm. The, I was assured on previous calls that there was a solution. The solution that I've come to find out is to put a plug in the line higher up to make it go into the stormwater overflow and dump into the cricks in the area, which I don't think is a solution. I think that's maybe a bandage to stopping the sewer going into these people's houses, but I don't consider that a fix to the problem. So, I, I'm proposing that there's a fix that includes putting that, continuing the 15-inch line all the way to the Baltimore City connection, which is a 15-inch line. I have a lot of detail. I've been, I've gotten a lot of input from the community on this, so I have a lot, you know, if anybody has questions, I can give more detail.
That was what I was gonna ask. I mean, can we get some of that detail before we make a final vote? Or we have to get that transmittal letter off to today, like the recommendations today?
I think it needs to go out. Mr. Lafferty, am I correct in that assessment?
So, with that, are you?
We do need to get this transmitted at earliest time as the executive is putting together his budget.
Are we, are we then sure that DPW does not, is not working on this to complete that, that stretch?
Yes. Yeah, their solution is to put, I, I have an email from them that their solution is to put a plug in the line higher up to stop the flow and have it go to the diverter, which is flowing into a local stream. So.
Do they explain why they don't want to do the last section?
Uh, they don't. They, they thought it was the city's problem up until recently. And now it's, they've, they've taken, as I understand reading this, they, they realized that it is in fact their fault and the councilman is gonna bring this up also, but I, I feel, I feel like I asked about this during the thing and was told it was fixed. And this isn't a fix, so I feel a little I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get the right answer that, or I got an answer that may not have been totally upfront, so if this is an opportunity to bring it up again, I, I wanna try to fix the solution. I mean, some of these people have gotten a total of 145 gallons of sewage into their basement, costing them thousands of dollars, which they are currently trying to recoup from the county at this point.
So, Steve, is there a way to double-check with DPW to make sure that, yes, they do not have this on schedule? To do the fix? Is there a way to double-check before we make an announcement? It may already be in their budget to do it.
It, it is not in their budget and their fix is this plug. So.
I could, I don't know from, you say you have information, Mr. Warren, is there, from a particular person over in Public Works?
Yeah, the, the letter came from, trying to, it's a pretty lengthy email here, but Taylor has the stuff too. She might be quicker at jumping into this and DPW, I see it here, Laura Bucklers.
Lauren Buckler?
Yeah.
It was a series of emails between Lauren Buckler, Lisa Eichols, and then the community resident is Margot Downing.
So, the email goes from Lauren, who indicates that the solution is the one you described, Todd?
Yes, as I read it, yes.
So, when did these emails come back and forth?
At this morning, one of them, and last night, one. Actually, I, I was, I didn't respond to a phone call from the one person last week when I was supposed to, and I, that was on me. I was busy and I, I just started to get those calls. Actually, Taylor's done a nice job of trying to get me on the phone with those guys, so thank you, Taylor, for that, but I actually had a lengthy call last night that lasted roughly an hour, and then this morning I got a couple of emails.
To address some of the, the concerns that I'm hearing, would you be willing to amend this to say that, I mean, I, I, I believe you and I, I think you're correct, but that if the only solution currently is the plug, you know, in other words, if there is not money in the current budget to do the, the complete fix of putting it in, and that we recommend that additional funds be allocated, as you said, to complete the 15-foot main from Overbrook to the city line.
That's what I'm requesting. I don't, I think I heard.
I, I just say, just to put the qualifier in, in case it, Mr. Array's issue of, you know, if, if there's money in, then it's a moot issue, but I believe you that it's not. This just gives a, an out if there is.
I, I, I don't have a problem with that. That's fine. I just wanted to be on the record.
Sure. No, no, I understand. Anyone else have any comments, questions? Ms. Wolfson?
Yes, I just wonder if on the Bicota Center, if we need to put the department number in there like we have it for the Hartford, Hereford High School? Should, should we mention that's Department 210?
I think we did, didn't we? It is. It's in the letter.
Yes.
It's in the letter, but it's not in the description.
What description? Can anybody?
Actually, it's on, yeah. I leave it to Mr. Lafferty whether we need to include those department numbers 210 and 213 in those two.
We can, we can add 210 for the Bicota Center. That's not a problem. Add to that particular department, and we have 213 for the gym.
You already have, I see that now.
Yes, and, and I've just tried to reach Director Walker at Public Works and didn't reach her about the extension. But if she gets back to me, I'll share whatever I hear from her.
Well, we have a motion and a second then from Mr. Warren. Is there any further discussion or comments?
So, before we take the final vote, Scott, can you repeat exactly how it's gonna look on the transmittal letter?
I will try to the best of my ability.
Can you translate for Todd?
Uh, well, and sort of what I, that, so I, I think the recommendation is if there is not funds already in the budget to complete the 15-foot main from Overbrook to the city line, that the Planning Board recommends adding whatever additional funds is needed to do this work. That about right?
That's perfect. To me, the only thing I would add is like the, the num, I don't know the, the GL number or whatever you would call the whatever Department of Works or whatever that.
Right. I don't know.
201, and the correct, only thing I'd correct, Scott, is you said 15-foot and it's a 15-inch.
Okay, sorry, 15-inch.
15-inch, yeah.
15-inch would be pretty.
That'd be a big sewer line.
Uh, so does that answer your question, Emily?
Okay. We'll do a roll.
Yep, I will now do a roll call vote on the proposed motion. Mr. Array? Yes. Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hafer?
Aye.
I don't think Mr. Heckman has joined us. Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo?
Aye.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Now, Mr. Halepka, again, Mr. Halepka, you forgot to mention yourself.
Oh. Typically, the chair doesn't vote, so I, I did not call.
Yes. Um, aye.
Are there? Are there any other comments, questions, additions we'd like to make?
Yes.
Mr. Yes, Mr. McGinnis, can you have your hand raised?
Yes. Recently, I made a motion that a item be added to the budget for Hereford High School, and a like amount could be deleted from the school budget in the same amount. And I was told that we could not add or subtract, that we had only, could only recommend. Well, I've asked for an official ruling on this because in the past, uh, the ruling was that the Planning Board could add or subtract items from the budget, whereas the county council could only subtract things from the budget. And unless something has changed, has there been an official ruling on this, whether I'm right or wrong?
Mr. Lafferty, I will, I mean, that's always.
We, we've not made an official request, the, for any kind of ruling on this issue. The board's legal responsibility is limited to making recommendations to the county executive. And the way the item reads in the transmittal letter, the board is recommending specific money for the planning. So, it would then be up to the county executive whether or not this money is, he takes a million from something else, or if he simply adds a million from some other source.
Is that a legal ruling or just somebody's interpretation? Because it has been done in the past before most of you were on the board and.
In the past, my understanding is that the, when an item was added, something else was deleted.
Yes.
You did not make any request to delete any items, so this is simply a request or a recommendation to have money added. And the Planning Board is limited to making recommendations. It does not have the final say on the budget.
Is that an official ruling? I requested a, an official ruling on that because I disagree with that.
Well, I don't know who you asked to make an official ruling. I'm.
Well, I'm asking anybody, you or, I've said it several times. I've asked it several.
I thought you indicated you were gonna talk to the Office of Law, sir.
Okay, well, can someone, can you talk to someone in the Office of Law, get an official ruling on this?
Before we vote on this transmittal?
Well, I think it's a little late for that now, but however, at the time, I was denied a request to do that, or saying that we could only recommend, and I disagreed with that. So, I don't know what.
So, Mr. McGinnis?
At this point, I guess I will not be able to do anything.
I, i- is your question whether or not we can recommend or whether we can make an explicit that it has to happen?
That you can delete or add to the budget. Not just recommend. Yes, I know you can recommend, but I was told I could not add something to the budget. I could only recommend. Now, of course, it could, we could have deleted a like amount from the budget in the past. It's been done. We could delete a item from the same budget or delay it for one year, and I'll give you an example. Down in Dundalk area, there was a problem with one of the schools, and a member of the Planning Board had that we moved, that we add a certain amount to the budget to cover this need. And a like amount was deleted from the budget and moved to the next year. So, it's been done in the past, and I just wondered if something had changed. That's why I was asking for an official ruling on this.
And there's a lo- local issue here in the Towson area that was similar, Mr. McGinnis, but in that case, if the county, the county council ultimately would not have to accept that, and either would the county executive.
Well, the county council can delete, can delete any item. That's true.
And the county executive accepts the recommendations from the Planning Board and has the authority then to whether he wants to accept it or not.
Yeah. So, the point is this. I was told you could not add or delete, or you could only recommend, and I say that is wrong, and that's why I've asked for an official opinion.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Mr. Luca, I, I would just information, Mr. Warren asked at, when we were deliberating or when you were deliberating regarding the fire department, and this is the issue that came up about electric vehicle charging stations when the report was being generated by the Planning Board. I spoke to Chief Rund. Uh, she indicates that the department does not have any specific allocations in the budget regarding these issues, but they're updating the training and response standards as the, as this issue and the technology evolves. And they expect subsequent potential, unique fire scenes that the, that the technology will be addressing. And they said that, she indicated this is sort of a, an issue across the country with EMS and firefighters everywhere. They're challenged with the technology, but that, to his specific question, there is no additional allocation in the operating or the capital budget.
Thank you for that, Mr. Lafferty. I, I'm just concerned that we made a, a rule or put in the, the, I, I understand that hasn't gotten through council anyways, but we had put something in there stating that, you know, doing this, we would give them additional support to do that, so I appreciate your feedback, but a little disappointing that I, I guess they just don't have the information, so I'll, I'll just let that go.
Any other comments?
Well, I would like to just further, although I agree with, with Mr. Lafferty that the county council can, I mean, the county council, yes, can delete any item that we put, add to the budget. And the county executive also has much leeway, but I wanted a, I'm asking for an official ruling on whether the Planning Board can add or subtract items from the budget. Not just recommend, but can they add or subtract? That's all I was asking.
I will find out from the Office of Law, Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, if there's no further discussion, I would like to offer the following motion. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board approve the FY 2025 Capital Budget and Capital Program FY 2026-2030 and accompanying transmittal letter as amended, as recommended by the Capital Budget and Program Subcommittee or transmittal to the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, I'll now do a roll call vote on this. Mr. Array?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hafer?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel? Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo?
Aye.
This, Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Excuse me, you forgot Ms. Panero. Thank you.
She back on? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I've been on the whole time. My phone just froze. I, it's okay. No worries.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfson, for.
Thank you, Nancy.
Correcting that. Uh, I believe that concludes this year's actions for the Capital Improvement Program. I will now turn it back to, to our chair to continue the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Halepka. Ms. Bensley and Mr. Lafferty will now fill us in on legislation recently passed by the county council following our last meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill 1-24 Zoning Regulations: Uses permitted in the business major BM and manufacturing light ML zones, residential uses in Hunt Valley for the purpose of permitting residential uses under certain circumstances in the BM zone and ML zone in close proximity to certain DT districts, providing certain restrictions and requirements for such residential uses and generally relating to residential uses in the BM and ML zones. Bill 2-24 Zoning Regulations: Live Musical Entertainment MH Zone for the purpose of permitting live or recorded music as a principal or accessory use to a property located in the manufacturing-heavy MH zone and applying current live musical entertainment use permit regulations to such a use in the MH zone and generally relating to live musical entertainment in the MH zone. Resolution 4-24 Adoption of Master Plan 2030: A Resolution of the Baltimore County Council to Adopt Master Plan 2030 as the master plan for Baltimore County. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Director Lafferty to provide additional comments on Bill 1-24 and Resolution 4-24.
Thank you, Taylor. Just wanted to take a moment to share with the board. I know that many of you have been following this. Councilman Catch introduced Bill 1-24 that would allow the construction of 290 single-family or two-over-two housing units where the Hunt Valley Inn has been located. The bill that Councilman Catch submitted also indicated that the bulk standards, area standards, height requirements that are listed in the comprehensive manual development policies did not apply. Furthermore, he exempted, well, it's not exempted. Under the current law, the property owner would be required to provide 290,000 square feet of open space. The bill said he didn't, they didn't need to provide, they didn't have to provide any more than 75,000. We are also concerned about the specific location, which Maryland Constitution, Maryland courts have ruled, you cannot have what is known as a special law where a bill or law applies to only one place or one property or one person. As a result, County Executive Bachevsky vetoed the bill. We urged him frankly to do so because we did not see the legitimacy of exempting this development from the comprehensive manual development policies, which is a document that the planning board both not only reviews and has a chance to amend, but then it goes to the county council for approval. This is the document that guides development throughout the county. We felt that this was frankly not the way to look at the process of development activity. And that if changes need to be made, they can be made through the CZMP, which in fact, they have submitted an issue for this site. You may have read that the council did uphold the veto on a five-to-one vote. But quite honestly, we are extremely disappointed in this bill, even though it was to provide residential units. The initial bill had setbacks of only 10 feet from either the property line or from adjacent properties. Again, we look at development plans as creating communities, not just creating housing. And we felt this was inappropriate. Regarding the master plan, the council has approved the master plan. They have issued a number of changes, not only in the text, but in some of the recommendations, but more substantively in the growth framework. You, I know, recall the discussion about the nodes and the targeted retrofit core areas that based on 27 different metrics that we applied, we were able to identify throughout the county. County Councilman Crandall eliminated all the nodes in his council district. Councilman Young added a new node at UMBC. Councilman Catch eliminated the node that was at the Lucerville Station stop in Richly Road in Lucerville, as well as modified two additional nodes and also created a new one along the light rail line up in Cockeysville. Councilman Marks also dramatically changed one of the nodes that was at the larger area intersection of Chappa and Hartford Road. We were extremely disappointed, not because we thought we had it perfect, but we know that we used and applied methods that were consistent across the board. And yet the council has removed these without defining, one, the reason for doing so, and secondly, without then providing any, if you will, additional description of the place type that now doesn't exist. So, you know, we appreciate it and we urged them really to retain everything the planning board sent to them. And we now will work on integrating the comments that the council has changed they made into a document that will be a printable document. But I just want to give you a little bit of sort of backstory on what we observed as far as the council's actions in addressing the growth framework that the planning board had approved. Chris, I see you have your hand up.
Just a quick question. Given that this was relatively new concepts were, were in that plan, was there any outreach provided to the council separately than just the presentation of the, of the plan to them to build awareness about what, what the goals and all were? I'm just, just wondering whether it was a situation where it was just a lack of, lack of understanding and knowledge?
Well, almost as soon as the plan was transmitted to them back in June, we had a virtual presentation to them of what the plan included and focused, of course, on the growth framework and how we, how that was developed. We had at least two other presentations to them as well about the plan for the public hearing.
Did anyone go and meet with each one individually and do a little bit more of?
We did not meet individually with each council.
Thanks.
Steve, if I could ask, as I had a little pet thing in there that we were going to study the impact of the hurdle on segregation. Did that make it through or did that get vetoed?
No, that was stricken. Anyway, I just wanted to share those perspectives because as I think each of you have indicated, a lot of important and hard work was put in, not only by staff, but the hundreds of people in the community who helped to develop really the vision and the framework that you all worked. Well, you, you had like three or four work sessions around the plan. So you all invested a lot of time and energy in it as well to come up with a document that you thought was appropriate for the future. And so, you know, we're going to do our best to make sure this document is one that actually is implementable. And, you know, just take it forward. So anyway, thank you. Yes.
Do you have a sense, I mean, yes, I know some of the, of the nodes, particularly in my end, were cut, but of the various nodes proposed, do you have a sense, are half of them still in? Three quarters of, I mean, just a sense of how much wasn't cut?
I really, I don't think I could easily do that because, for instance, in districts two and four, neither councilman adjusted those nodes. And we know that Liberty Road and Ricehurst Town Road, there were a lot of areas that were included. Of the ones that were in Councilman Catch's district, he probably modified half of the ones that were in his district. But then, of course, when you move out beyond Hunt Valley, there were no designated areas because of, well, you had the rural villages, but. His, his primary focus is really along the light rail line.
Thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick question. So I know you said it was going to eventually come out in printable form, but will the master plan on the online also be updated with all the council changes?
Yes.
Okay, you just don't have the timing on that?
No, we have this little thing called CZMP that's sort of taking the air out of the room.
Everybody?
As you know, because you've invested a lot of time with these hearings, April is, I mean, work session, you all have work sessions in April around CZMP. And up until that time, Jen Meacham and Chris Weaver and their team are going to be mapping the recommendations that we expect to get out to you. We're, we're looking at that sometime just before Easter to get the recommendations out to you. So you'll have a couple of weeks to review them before you're then asked to sequester the various issues to be discussed and voted on separately. So at least at this stage, I don't, I don't know that we're going to have much time, quite honestly, Emily, to really dig into and start to modify much of the plan or start the integration of the comments into the plan.
You can ask a question, is it possible to do what they call in the legal profession, a red line of what was deleted? Take, you know, hours and sort of highlight it either in yellow or something that, just to try to, if we want to look ahead, if we want to look ahead, I'm not sure why I just lost your screen, but, but look at it for future years. You know, we were late with the, you know, with the report this time for years, but maybe it comes back to us at some point. And we remember that we want to still make some of these changes. And then Taylor, just for you, while I'm speaking, I'd love to see a little bit more of a current schedule for the rest of March and April and May, just because I saw a bunch of things today that were in, canceled, back and forth. I'm not sure that I know what all of our schedule is for the next couple of months, which I'd like to get on my calendar.
That, we'll make sure you get that. In fact, the, the online resolution, Resolution 4-24 about the master plan does show basically the, the red lines, strikeouts and insertions that have been made in the plan. And then it also will, will show you specifically which each council member may have proposed as amendments.
That's great, I wasn't aware of that, I'll look at that.
So if you go to the county council website, you can look at Resolution 4-24, it has all of that in there.
Okay, that would be helpful, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you, Ms. Bensley and Mr. Lafferty. Thank you so much for sharing that information. It's very enlightening, we appreciate it. This is the conclusion of our agenda. We will have a public hearing on the same WebEx at 5:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn the board meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll be all back on at 5 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, and welcome to the Baltimore County Planning Board Public Hearing on the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. The public hearing is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, I'm the Chair of the Baltimore County Planning Board. We will now start our meeting with a roll call of the members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfer?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman? Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Holipka? Mr. Holipka?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Mr. Perlo?
Aye.
Ms. Panero? Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren? Mr. Warren?
Yeah, aye.
Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Thank you all. This evening, we'll have the public hearing on the Department of Public Works and Transportation standard specifics and standard details for construction manuals. This item was first introduced to the board on February 15th with a presentation from Mr. Justin Hall from the Department of Public Works and Transportation. Tonight, Mr. Hall is here to further present the manual to the board. Following his presentation, the board members will have a chance to ask questions and then members of the public will have an opportunity to speak on this matter. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Hall.
Thank you. Mike, go ahead and share my screen. Once you guys can see that, let me know.
Not yet, Justin.
Okay, let me see, here we go. One second. Let me know if you can see it now.
Yes.
Awesome. My stuff organized, okay. All right. Good evening, Madam Chair Hafford and Planning Board Members. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to present for your consideration the Department of Public Works and Transportation Standard Specifications and Standard Details for Construction. Per County Code Article 32, Title 4, Subtitle 4, Adoption of Manuels, DPWT has prepared the Manual of Standard Details and the Manual of Standard Specifications. These standards cover everything from how we solicit bids, how bids are to be provided by interested parties, to the contract of work process, how construction work is performed, and how the contractors are paid for work performed. The current specifications were approved and issued in year 2000 with addendums from years 2007 and 2013. The standard details were approved and issued in year 2007. We have updated the manual for several reasons, including updating the materials and practices used for utility installations, correcting titles for positions and agencies, and reflecting new county policies and procedures. In addition, we have updated frequently modified specification sections. Grand provisions of the specifications were posted to the DPWT website for over two years. Here's an example, one of the specification sections. Specifications cover a variety of subjects, including drainage, grading, structures, paving, traffic, and materials, to name a few. And here you can see a list of some of the stuff described in this specific specification sections. Here's an example of standard details we have. We have standard details from multiple disciplines, including water, sewer, roads, and storm drains, as well as some general details. You can see a general detail here as well as a sewer detail. With that, I want to thank everyone and open up if you have any questions for us.
Board members, are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Hall, this is Peter Array. I know in the, in your document, in the specs, do you have a particular section dealing with restoration of disturbed areas?
I, site restoration. A site restoration section you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah, we do cover restoration and-
Yeah, that's a great question. My name is Matt Leonie, I'm Chief of Construction Contracts. We do have specifications regarding restoration. The specifications and the detail are more general, really down to here is what you can use to restore, how you restore it, materials that are used for restoring, and then in the project-specific plans would show areas that would be restored and point to those standard details for ways that they would be restored.
So, when a contract is awarded, that the restoration document, that piece of it is given to the contractor as a part of the contract?
Yes, the full contract documents include the standard details, the standard specifications, as well as project-specific plans. So the plans would show the area to be restored and then refer to the specifications for how they are to be restored.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board?
I, I do, it's Chris. Just since it, the one slide being put out mentions procurement aspects of this and kind of procurement law aspects of this, I just wondered, I'm not familiar with the process, has the, I guess, the, the attorney that specializes in, in procurement law for the county reviewed this to make sure it's in compliance with the various procurement rules, policies, and regulations that are in place?
They have, and, and really, we're not reinventing the wheel by spelling out the law in this book, we point to the most current version of the law.
Okay.
And let the lawyers write those.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not hearing any, Ms. Bensley, or is there anyone signed up to speak for this evening?
No, there is not, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. Well, that, we don't have any speakers at this time, no one signed up? And there, is there any further questions or comments?
Madam Chair, if I, if I may, although it's sort of off topic, I just want to once again thank the planning board members for all the diligence and hard work that you put into the, the C Z M P and the meetings, the hours, the thoughtfulness. It's unfortunate that the last session took the turn it did with some of the, the public, but I think all of you should feel proud about the work you've done. And Nancy, you just, you were terrific trying to maintain some order and calm so that those who were there to make their case for their issues had the opportunity to do that, you know? Democracy gets messy and it was, but overall, I think you all should feel very good about the work you did.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty, but we feel the same about you and your team over there because they've been doing the heavy lifting, you've all been doing the heavy lifting. So, all right, then, I guess, then we just call to adjourn.
Madam Chair, we are going to adjourn and then the annotated agenda, we're going to immediately reconvene for a vote on the matter.
Yes, we'll do that. Okay, reconvene, we're going to, we're going to adjourn and then we will reconvene. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay, now we're going into our third meeting of the evening. Good evening again, the public meeting for the Baltimore County Planning Board will now reconvene and called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the Chair of the Planning Board, and we'll start with a roll call accounting for the members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hayford.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Heinel.
Aye.
Mr. Hinton.
Aye.
Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Perlow.
Aye.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
This evening, we have an opportunity to discuss and then vote on the Department of Public Works and Transportation Standards, Specifications, and Standard Details for Construction Manual. The staff from the Department of Public Works and Transportation are here to answer questions that the board may have as we discuss before we vote. Board members, are there any outstanding questions for the Department of Public Works and Transportation?
Well, again, this is Peter Array. One last question on this. Now, the manual is also coordinated through, do you coordinate this specs using the setup by M D, by the State Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration Construction? The documents are they similar to the state specifications and standards?
They are similar in points, a lot of our materials that we use as far as aggregates in concrete, strengths of concrete, we do use state concrete mixes. There are also pieces that are county-specific, but where they're county-specific, they're not wildly different from state highway reckon, or state or M dot recommendations. But where applicable, we do reference or mimic S H A details.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nancy?
Yes?
Nancy, this is Mr. Johnson, I just have a question. Is this manual more user-friendly than the other? And what things have been put into it to make it easier to read, easier to understand it, easier to reference any materials that those who read it will have to reference?
It, it's more user-friendly in that the, the formatting is a bit more modern than the old one was. There are ways that legal documents, that this is really a contract document when you get down to it, that they have to be written. So it's as user-friendly as it can be while still being legally defensible.
Any other questions or comments? Not hearing any, may entertain a motion?
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board, in accordance with Section Thirty-two dash four dash four oh four, is accepting of the Department of Public Works and Transportation Standard Specifications and Standard Details for Construction Manual and recommends the manuals be forwarded to the county council for further review and adoption.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, I'm going to do a roll call. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hayford?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Mr. Heinel? Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Halepka?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Thank you. Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Mr. Perlow?
Aye.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, that's the conclusion of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn our third meeting?
Motion.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all and have a great evening.
Good night, everybody.